Very good. Good morning. My name is John Cullen. I'm the Commissioner of Emergency Services in Westchester County. Our department has four divisions and a branch. So the four divisions are Emergency Management, and this is where we're located today. Dennis Del Borrego is actually the Director of that division. We have the Fire Division, which is fire training, and we also coordinate support, fire chiefs out in the field when they have large incidents with deputy fire coordinators. We oversee all training, all state and local training for all firefighters in Westchester County. We have Emergency Medical Service Division, which also provides training and coordination out in the field. And then we also have the Communications Division, which dispatches the majority of the fire and EMS agencies in Westchester County. And then also our branches, our Administration Branch, nobody can work without that, very good group. And I just want to give you a couple snippets you guys are planning, you guys are the expert, and we really appreciate that. Where policy and planning don't always jive. So here, in Emergency Management Division, they made a policy that they're gonna move up here to the State Building. Planning was involved. It's, when you get downstairs and get the tour by Dennis afterwards, you're gonna see what a great facility this is and how planning and policy really came together and made a facility that 15 years later still operates to the day it was built here. And on the other side of it, our department was originally a bureau under Public Safety, and they built a career fire station and training facility. Then we, in 2000, we became the Department of Emergency Services, where they merged all of these divisions and everything together and put us in a career fire station. So we lacked office space, training space, storage space, all kinds of space. So we're still trying to catch up. I think we have, next week, a Grasslands Plan Committee.
Oh, yeah. Actually, this week.
This week, because we're very anxious to talk to. So when the department was formed, the policy was to form a department, but planning, it just didn't, we didn't communicate. And it was, you know, nobody's fault, it just didn't come together. So we're trying to catch up now with the department up on the works and planning and trying to build a facility to fit out what our needs and our mission are. So we very much appreciate the work that everybody does here and look forward to giving you the tour. We're very proud of this facility, it's a state facility, we're a tenant. We're very proud of this facility here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you train the volunteer firefighters as well as the regular?
We do. So New York State Office of Fire and Security Control does the training. We host them here. We have a fire coordinator, every county has a fire coordinator, and his job is to oversee if the training is properly dispersed and the volunteer fire service and career fire service get the training that's required.
Was the press conference with the governor, was that in this building?
The one Sunday was at the New York State Department Transportation Yard in Patona. So the governor does have a, it's not his main EOC, but he has an EOC here. And that's what's great about this facility is during weather or otherwise a man-made event, the state is right here with us. So we work very closely with the state when we have an emergency. You can see that down in Emergency Operations Center.
Okay. They're good now, right?
They're good, yes, thank you.
I'll call the meeting to order. You can see the next meeting dates, are any of them away from the county office building?
No, they're all, as of right now, they're all in-house, except that we are working with the Medical Center to arrange for a tour of their new, the new expansion of the Medical Center. So we're looking at either May or June for that. I'm waiting for them to get back to me, unless the construction's not finished yet, but we think it's finished enough that we should be able to, be able to do a tour of the expanded Medical Center.
Okay, adopted the minutes. Now, in your package, you can, there was an update to the minutes, had a few red line changes that I had made. Does anyone else have any issues, corrections, or edits to the February minutes? If not, a motion seconded, ready? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. As part of the update, the edit to the February minutes, there's a very minor change to the November minutes, which is, I had asked for a change we made, and I guess I didn't make it completely clear. And it was, they made the change I wanted, but added a few extra words that I didn't want changed. It's on the second page, it's the red li, it's the line that is red line. And so I guess we need a motion to go back and amend the November minutes, just to take that one portion of the line out. And there is concern about the traffic impact with King Street, because there is-
It's in the February minutes.
Well, in the February-
Oh, so you didn't reissue it?
It's in the second page of the February minutes, the red line, that I want taken out of the November minutes.
By correcting the, by adopting the February minutes with the amendment, it will correct the November minutes.
So I don't have to have a separate motion?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have anything in particular, Commissioner?
Oh, okay. So there are a number of things that are in the works. The first thing I wanted to do today was to introduce our new Housing Director, but unfortunately she called me, that she got a flat tire on her way here. So as soon as Jane arrives, we will make that introduction at the appropriate time in the meeting. As Commissioner Cullen mentioned, we are starting our Grasslands Master Plan update. If you remember, part of the capital budget, put some money in our, into the Planning Department budget for us to be able to undertake a master plan update. The last master plan that was adopted by the county was 1985. There's been a lot of changes out at Grasslands, a lot of different users out there, and so we're actually starting the process this Thursday with a meeting of all the stakeholders, the county stakeholders, all the county departments that have use out, current uses out at the Grasslands in some capacity, to be able to understand what they have, who has plans for what, what they know of in terms of any deficiencies, particularly as it relates to utilities and other things out there. And then to start the discussion about what they see as their needs going into the future. So, you know, at this point with the signing of the North 60 lease, there's only a couple of additional parcels, vacant parcels out at Grasslands, so we really need to start looking at, making sure that the best use is defined for those going forward. Housing needs assessment should be, the draft should be to us by the end of this month. So we should actually have, actually the completed study should be out by March 31st. So I'm hoping for our April, where people have, we think at least one housing development before you. The RXR received its land use approvals on last Monday evening, so they should be able to be here for your board meeting in April. So we're, you know, there's probably gonna be more of a housing focus for your April board meeting. And then, like I said, likely we'll have some kind of discussion about the housing needs assessment, or at least be able to release it at that point.
RXR?
Is a developer in New Rochelle.
Okay, and they're gonna be here?
They will not be here. We will do their, what their ask is, okay? And then the last thing I wanted to fill you in on, just to keep you updated on, was CDBG. As you, many of you will remember, we had got your approval last month of the recommending of the consolidated plan. We brought it to the Board of Legislators. The committees took it up yesterday, so it's been signed out of committee. Blanca Lopez and I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC last week. We met with some of the HUD folks to be able to get updates of what's going on. They do not expect that we will actually get grant amounts until April 15th. So that's actually going to delay our submission of the consolidated plan, because we are not allowed, according to the notice that they put out in February, we're not allowed to actually submit a plan until we know exactly what the dollar amount is of our award for each of the three grants, CDBG Home and ESJ. So we're proceeding forward to make sure everything will be ready to go as soon as they get us those numbers, and then we'll just make the appropriate adjustments to it at that point. So it will likely impact municipalities who are hoping for a maester first start date, because if we can't submit to the federal government until April 15th, they have to have at least 45 days to be able to review the plan. And they are likely to have a whole ton of other plans being submitted all at the same time, because everybody's plans have now been delayed because of the government shutdown. So, you know, but that's our, that's the schedule at this point, is some submission likely between April 15th and the end of April, for, you know, a start date 45 days thereafter.
Will there be a common nationwide start date?
No, because everybody totally operates on different schedules. And partly because it's important for Westchester and generally for the Northeast to have earlier start dates, because you want to make it the most of the construction season. That doesn't necessarily matter in other parts of the country. When we first started CDBG, we actually had an August start date. And then we actually found in the early 90s, we were falling behind on spending our grants, and it was because by the time we got our approvals, the municipalities got their contracts, they really had lost that year's construction season. So that's why we moved our start date back to May 1st. But they're, right now, I think White Plains might be September 1st, I think Malvernin is-
Malvernin was June 9th.
Okay, I'm not sure that they are June 9th anymore, so-
Just happened to be the date, it's 1974 that it started.
So, yeah.
The budget then will, you'll get the real numbers and then have-
We'll make the appropriate adjustments.
And then that comes back to us, or you're able to move ahead with what we did already?
Because your approvals and the Board of Legislators approvals will all include the word approximately.
Okay. But what you actually preliminarily allocated was possibly less than the amount that you're gonna get for CDBG.
Possibly, but if it's-
So how will you fill in the difference?
Oh, based on the comments periods, based on the comments that we received during that 30-day-plus comment period? For example, the Town of Osining brought to our attention that while we were recommending a new senior van for them for year two, one of their senior vans got totaled in the end of December. So it was well after we had, they submitted their application, well after we did our review, but things had changed. So there are definitely other, other things that can move about, and if we get less than we anticipate, then as I mentioned last month, we just eliminate the rehab program or reduce the rehab. We could put a little over half a million dollars into the budget for, to reestablish our rehab program. That's my real cushion in the event that we get less. What HUD did tell us was that there are two new grantees, two new urban counties, including us. So from the last time we got a grant, there were approximately 1,200 grantees across the country, there are now 1,211. So there's 11 more slices to the pie from the last time we got funding. So I don't, and even, and 2019 funding ultimately, what Congress approved, was level with what was approved in 2018. So HUD was telling the grantees, the urban counties, to expect within 5% of what they had previously received, but it sounded like 5% lower. But because there's 11 more slices to the pie than the last time we were in business, I don't expect we'll get more. If anything, I'm hoping we get what we were anticipating to get. Okay? That's it, that's my-
Okay, referrals. Ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the County Planning Board, January 16th, 2019 through February 15th, 2019. You have in your package, the compilation of all the referrals. Some of them are quite big ones, developments in this referral package.
There's a continuing comment about the sewer capacity. I guess at some point, I think we need to get briefed on, I think we're, some parts we're pretty close to fully utilize the facilities we have. It comes to a point where you may not be able to use INI to offset what's that, and then at some point you just have to have funds contributed toward upgrading or expanding, I guess. So I don't know when we get to that point, but it was pretty constant through here that we have a problem. It's the same thing with no gas, no sewer. I mean, would these things fit into the planning field? And somehow we have to start, it used to be, you just assumed you had sufficient water, but I mean, even water, you've got to look at, I suppose it's time to-
Oh, even, New Rochelle has identified that they're gonna, they've got to expand the pipes to get more water with all the development that's proposed in downtown New Rochelle. So even water is an issue at this point.
I think it would be a good idea at a future meeting to have a presentation on the capacity of the county sewer facilities. And I also would like to hear, you know, at the end of every letter, we say INI is going to infiltration and-
Inflow and infiltration.
Do we calculate that? Does anyone say, well, yeah, you've done your two-to-one, or you've done your whatever? I'm curious as to whether it's just a statement, or it's actually calculated, or it's actually been accomplished on the other side of the issue.
All right, well, we'll work with the Department of Environmental Facilities to see what we can pull together. I will tell you that we have been in conversation with the County Executive's Office about the need to do a study on capacity of infrastructure in this county, particularly the utilities, because it's, it's really, it's been coming to our attention more significantly in the last couple of years. So we were starting to identify the sources and who would actually, you know, the appropriate consultant to be able to undertake such a study. But yeah, so there's definitely, I'm not sure we're gonna have the answers in, for all that you're asking as quickly as this year, just because I believe it's a bigger issue than what we're thinking of.
But hasn't a consultant been hired to do some study of the Yonkers plant?
Benny?
What is my understanding?
Of the Yonkers plant?
For the-
The sewer plant?
For the capacity, yeah?
No, it's just about pollution, environmental impact, and that sort of stuff.
I mean, we have a number of projects at the plant, you know, you know the-
Right, right, right.
I don't know if we have, you don't have any, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
Well, I think we were told at a previous meeting at the plant that there was going to be a study of the, you know, the smell, the impound, and something like-
Right, yeah, well, that's ongoing, that should be wrapped up, I think by the end of this month.
Oh, it's gonna be finished?
The study.
The study. Oh, that's fabulous.
So we'll probably present that at the level of part-
We're aching to hear what, yeah, that's great.
We'll talk about the steps going forward.
That would be very, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have all these referrals. Does anyone have to recuse or have any comments? If not, I will take them up.
On, the one on the CBS in Yonkers, I don't know if it makes much difference, but that is not a abandoned Goodyear plant. It's an operating automobile dealership, possibly a used car dealership. It's also, Culver Street is a very narrow street, and it's a two-way street with parking on both sides. And with a playground and a ball court on that street. So it seems to me that there would be some concern with the entry and exit from the CVS store, that it be on Riverdale, or that it be at the very front of Culver off of Riverdale, because that street cannot take a large amount of traffic, especially if they're gonna be parking in the back where the house is now, it's going to be directly adjacent to the ball courts.
Unfortunately, like last month's issue of the architecture of the affordable housing, this is a matter for local determination. This is, you know-
We can't have a comment about that.
We can make a comment, but it's not-
Well, basically, this came in for lead agency and for a zoning map amendment. So we'll get another bite at the apple when it comes in for a site plan, if they refer it. So this, this should come in for a site plan for, under, as a referral, and we would get an opportunity to review it.
If they approve the map change, and then subsequently CVS makes an application for site plan, then it'll-
Right, right, we would see. So, so they only sent us very, very, very preliminary site plans, and so we made preliminary comments, and we noted that in the letter. And we said, you know, the zoning change is a matter for local determination, we offer you these preliminary comments, but we reserve the right for a full comment when the Yonkers Planning Board refers it to us at a later date.
Okay, because, I mean, this description is at least a year and a half, two years old.
That could be. I mean, we go off of what they send us.
I know, but this is not-
So, yeah. I mean, we, we aren't able to do site visits to all these sites, so we can't verify-
No, that's why we have us.
Any other comments on the referrals? Can I have a motion to adopt the-
Yeah, for New Rochelle, when do we expect to get back, you know, the comments that are listed here? I agree with them. And when will they get back to us? Because it's recommended, but it's-
Yeah, well, all of our comments are recommendations to every municipality. They're supposed to get back to us when something gets approved-
Right.
Or denied. That doesn't always happen, and we're trying to work with the local municipalities to make sure that they do give us the follow-up information as to what happened. But I don't know, was that, which one are you talking about?
You being our partners?
Yes.
Okay, right, they referred us to the site plan, we commented on the site plan, and that will probably be the end of it.
So they already sent?
Yeah.
Which is great.
Theoretically, when, before they take a vote, they should incorporate our comments into the record, and if there is a environmental impact statement being prepared, the environmental impact statement would have to respond specifically to our comments. But they don't have to let us know until the end of the process.
Just one question on, in Yonkers, on older matter, and I'm sorry, I listened here at the last meeting. Was there further conversation as to what exactly they want to do, because that's right next to the Noir Nature Preserve? We had an interesting relationship with them.
They only gave a very basic description of what they might want to do with it. They didn't show plans or anything like that.
Yes, this is big controversy.
This was, this was just to change the zoning to allow them to do something else. But again, we noted that the change was a local determination, but if they do do something, they have to refer it. We put that in a letter that it would need to be referred, and that we reserve those comments for that time.
Any other comments on any of the referrals?
I'll move them.
Move, can I have a second? Second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
May I just add something quick? Just so you all are aware, we now are posting these letters on the website. So once they go out, they go up on our website. So you can, anyone can look at the entire letter right after it's sent.
What would be the thing to click on on the website?
Okay, well, you'll go to the County Planning Board webpage, and then there's a link on it that says, click here to see all the 2019 referrals. And then, unfortunately, they're not sorted by date, they're sorted by municipality, but you could just scroll through in any referral that's of interest, you just click on it, and the PDF pops up and you see the entire letter.
Good.
And going forward, it's gonna be like that forever and ever.
For your tenure, yeah.
Okay, next, referrals of interest. The flats at Westchester Avenue, 1133 Westchester Avenue, White Plains, zoning amendment and site plan approval.
Right.
Lucas?
Would it be okay if we just flipped it? I, I actually did the overview first, and that will give you a flavor of what's to come with 1133.
All right, so now we're going to go to matters for board discussion, redevelopment of the Platinum Mile, I-287 corridor. This is, we had asked, because there's so many developments proposed in that one area which are not necessarily interconnected, we asked for an update.
And here it is. So just to give you a brief overview of where the Platinum Mile is, basically, the Platinum Mile is the area, it's on the border between White Plains and Harrison, and it's basically the area that's defined by Westchester Avenue, as it goes, as it basically serves as a service road for 287. One thing to note with that is, is because Westchester Avenue functions as a service road, an interesting attribute of the corridor is that you cannot go from one side to the other unless you use one of these seven bridges that go across 287. So Westchester Avenue is eastbound in one direction, westbound in the other direction, and to switch back and forth, you have to use a bridge. The other thing to note is that the Mamaroneck River runs basically along the municipal boundary between White Plains and Harrison, which makes stormwater management a serious issue along this corridor. And also Maplemore Golf Course is at the very bottom. That little green spot is Maplemore Golf Course, which we'll get to actually later in the presentation. So I just kinda wanted to give you an overview, section by section of the Platinum Mile. I divided it into three sections, just to make it a little easier. The first section is, well, the first, we'll go from west to east. So the first section begins kinda where the split is with Westchester Avenue. So if you're heading out of White Plains on Westchester Avenue, you cross under 287, and then it splits into eastbound and westbound components. And in this area, you basically have a lot of, like, smaller office parks that are closer to the road. Like, you might be familiar with WestMed, or there's a couple of smaller office buildings here. And then on the White Plains side, there's larger office parks, but they're located kinda close to the road. And in the middle, there's actually a residential neighborhood, which is really kinda the only residential neighborhood along the corridor. Going towards, on the Harrison side, going east, Fordham University is here. This was an office building that was repurposed for the college, for the university. And that's really the only, you know, development that's kind of far off the corridor in this particular section. So going east, the next area is the Teardrop. Now, this has been a real hotbed of activity in recent years. You might be aware of Lifetime Fitness, this is where the Journal News used to, where they used to print the newspapers and have all the writers' work, and that was torn down and a Lifetime Fitness facility was built. There's also a Hyatt House Hotel here. These are some of the newer developments. The main characteristics with this part of the Platinum Mile is that it has three, I'm sorry, four kind of dead-end roads that go into it. There's not a lot of road connectivity here at all. So everything is accessed by westbound Westchester Avenue, except where these roads line up at bridges. So this road and this road line up at bridges, this road and this road do not. Another interesting thing about this area is that there is a road that comes in from the Northeast, this is Manhattanville Road. And it goes across 287, there is a Diamond Interchange here. I'm sorry, 684, comes across 64, and there's an interchange here. But you can't go through here. So this is Corporate Park Drive, it dead-ends right here, and you can see Manhattanville Road, but there's a fence, and you can't go through it. And that's a major impediment for access in and out of this teardrop shape. Finally, this is the easternmost part of the corridor, and it's kind of anchored by, this is where Westchester Avenue kind of joins back together again on the east, and this is where the Taj Mahal is, where General Foods was located and whatnot. And then this, going west, this is the Purchase, where is it? I think it's the Medical Office Park, there's another WestMed facility in here. This was the most recent office building that was built. This came in as a referral, I think in 2001, 2002, and it was eventually built as an office, a medical office building. It's pretty, it's kind of lower density in this section, but, and then once you get past the Cloverleaf here with the Hutchinson River Parkway, you'll see that this is 1133 Westchester Avenue, which is gonna be the referral we'll look at later. And this is Maplemore Golf Course, that's right here. So this is the least dense part of the corridor. So now to go, take a look at a couple of the recent developments, the recent referrals that we've received. This one, we'll start west and we'll go east. So this one is 220, 230, 244 Westchester Avenue, and that's in Harrison. So these are small, little office parks that are right along the road. And this was an interesting one, it's kind of funny, I guess. They want to construct an accessway, an access drive that will connect these two properties, because so many people drive past it, and then they can't get, once you drive past, it's like, it's like, yeah, it's really hard to, to get back around. So I guess, oh, so this is right here. So as you can see, you're on Westchester Avenue, if you blow past 244, you would have to go, actually, you can't go here, Anderson Hill Road, you have to keep going. You have to go to like, to like the Westchester Mall, and you almost do like a, you can go U-turn and come back around. So, so I guess what people were doing was, they were coming, they would miss it, and then they would just park over here and hack their way through the landscaping, whatever, to get to this building. So they decided to, since it's owned by the same organization, they decided just to construct a roadway in between. So that would take care of that problem, but, you know, so that, I guess that's good. But there's still lots of other issues, like you can see here- But there's still lots of other issues, like you can see here, like, um, there are these bus stops that are just not connected to anything. If you take the bus here, you have to hack through landscaping and stuff like that. Um, back when I was in college, I had a temp job in this building and I took the bus there and it, oh, it was awful, like, uh, I had to hack my way through the bushes and stuff to get into the building. So, at least I work at the county now. It's easier to take the train. Okay, so going towards the Teardrop, um, this is, there's been a lot of activity in the, in the Teardrop. Uh, so these are a couple right here. Um, the yellow ones are, um, residential projects. So this is, uh, 3 Westchester Park Drive. This is 450 apartments. It's proposed. Um, then this one here is called The Caraway. This is at 103, 105 Corporate Park Drive. This is under construction. 421 apartments. You may also know this as Toll Brothers. It was the Toll Brothers, the development, but now they're calling it The Caraway. This is a new one. This is 104 Corporate Park Drive. This is an existing office building that's going to be converted to a pediatric medical facility. And then behind it is everyone's, uh, is the, is the favorite one, uh, Wegmans, which is currently under construction. This is at the end of Corporate Park Drive. And it'll be 121,000 square foot supermarket.
What happens to the existing buildings?
Okay, this one, uh, this building is being torn down for the Wegmans. Well, so this is a, um, a renovation of an existing building with a small expansion. These office buildings will be torn down, or have been torn down for the apartments, and then this also will be torn. This is an office building. Will be demolished. So a lot, there's a lot of demolition going on, like, and Lifetime Fitness was the same thing. Um, so a lot of, in a lot of cases, buildings are just being demolished and brand-new buildings are being constructed. So in a way, you kinda have a clean slate where you can like, really, um, master-plan this area out for a maximum, uh, benefit. But as you'll see, that's, may not, may or may not be occurring. So, one of the issues they have to deal with is all the, um, the four roads that go into this, or the three roads here that go into this, none of them have complete sidewalk networks, which is an issue, especially if you're gonna be putting, you know, a mix of uses on these roadways, you know, residential and commercial, I mean, retail. You, you may not be able to walk between these sites because there just isn't a complete sidewalk network along each road. Most of them have sidewalks in some places, but none of them have sidewalks along their entire length. Um, there's also very complicated access between the sites. So if you take a look here, like, if you walk from, if you wanna go from one apartment building to the Wegmans, this is the route you have to take. So if you're, if you're in this building, you gotta go out to Westchester Avenue, up to the bridge, over the bridge, then down Westchester Avenue, over the bridge, and then up the road to Wegmans. Really, really far. But it's really, really close, you know, so, um, so that's an issue. Uh, same deal with Lifetime Fitness. If you work in Lifetime Fitness, you wanna get lunch at Wegmans, these properties abut each other. But you certainly can't drive between them and maybe you could walk if you like, hack your way through the woods or something like that. Um, there's no formalized walking path between them. But, you know, you can certainly get in your car and drive all the way around, you know, if you want to. And then, keep in mind, this is four traffic lights. It's one, two, three, four lights to get through. Um, another example is, okay, the pediatric facility is, will be here and behind it is the Renaissance Westchester Hotel. So with, we know that with many pediatric facilities, you know, families might travel to, um, you know, uh, have their child go into the facility. So there is usually a need for, you know, hotel units for the parents. So in this case, you have a hotel that abuts the, um, pediatric facility, which is pretty good, right? Not if you don't have a walking path or any way to get from the hotel to the facility. So if you're coming from the facility, the, the doctor's office, you had to go out, uh, over the bridge. But then, because there isn't a bridge anywhere near here, you gotta go all the way out to Kennelworth Road and back, and then up this road. Or if you're savvy at driving on highways, you can manipulate the Cloverleaf here. You can go around the Cloverleaf and, you know, but you gotta be pretty slick to do that. A lot of people get, don't wanna do that. So basically, it's, it's very, very hard. But the sites abut each other. Um, truck and, um, vehicle access from 684 is also an issue, thanks to the, um, closure of this, uh, Manhattanville Road here. So to show you what would have to happen, um, trucks or vehicles coming from 684 would have to go all the way around. This is particularly troubling with the Wegmans because they get a lot of truck deliveries. And wouldn't it be better if the truck could just come in here and make the delivery instead of driving all the way around? Um, when we reviewed the plans, we brought that up. Um, actually, every single referral we've gotten for this Teardrop area, we've brought those things up. But particularly with that Manhattanville Road, I can understand that, you know, if, if some people don't wanna open to all traffic, but perhaps there's a way to have a, a gate access or something so that, uh, trucks and buses, um, can come through here and, um, take advantage of that efficiency. I mean, I can't speak for others. I mean,
What do they say?
Uh, it's only what I hear by rumor, which is that these, these folks don't want it open, but I, but, um, they maybe they'll change their mind once they wanna shop at Wegmans and they don't wanna, a one-way?
So you couldn't go up?
Oh, oh, a one-way. Oh, like you could go in one-way with a truck and then you'd have to go out. Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be a good idea. Anything would be an improvement over this, which is a chain-link fence with a do-not enter, you can't go there.
But Lifetime Fitness would like you to eat in Lifetime Fitness, not in,
Oh, they have restaurants? They have a restaurant? Oh, they do? Oh.
They do.
Oh.
Yeah, but if you're shopping,
Yeah.
you might wanna do both. Okay.
So, moving right along, um,
All those are in the town of Harrison?
Yes, the Teardrop is all in the town of Harrison. Yeah, that's all town of Harrison. Inefficient transit access is also, um, an issue. Uh, the main, the county's main bus routes along the corridor are on Westchester Avenue. And these are the bus stops. Uh, most of them, but not all of them correspond with the bridges that go across. Uh, all of them are at the base of the roads that go in, like, for example, the Teardrop, all of them are at the base of the roads that go in. So if you are going in, well, actually, if you are going into the site, your best option is to take advantage of the county's loop system. So the county runs these, um, beeline bus shuttle loops that go into, they all go up the road, turn around and come back. So they're very inefficient. Um, they all are set up for the peak hour, so they come, like, from the White Plains train station in the morning, they come in, they go up like Corporate Park Drive to drop people off only. And then they go back to the train station, pick up more people, come back and drop them off. And then in the afternoon, it's the reverse. So they don't really run in the middle of the day. They don't run late night. They don't, they just run AM peak, PM peak in the peak direction only to and from the train station. So, um, so that's what you would get with a loop shuttle. If you are traveling at a different time or you're coming from a destination that's different than the White Plains train station, you're gonna have to use the stops along Westchester Avenue that the fixed routes use. So it's like the Route, uh, 12, 13, um, the Leprechaun Bus, the I-Bus. So these are buses where they stop at the, where the roads intersect with Westchester Avenue. And as you can see, it might be easy one way, but tough the other way. So suppose you need to get to Lifetime Fitness, which is right here. If you're coming on, um, if you're coming from Portchester, on the 13 bus, you can get off at the base of, um, uh, Westchester Park Drive and then just walk up the road on, on a road that doesn't have sidewalks to the Lifetime Fitness. Um, in the afternoon or whatever, if you wanna go back to, um, Portchester, you would have to walk back down the road with no sidewalks, then you'd have to walk on Westchester Avenue that has no sidewalk, cross a bridge, the bridge has a sidewalk, then you gotta go on the other side of Westchester, no sidewalk, and wait for the bus here. And it gets, it gets better or worse depending on where you are coming from. This is an example of a typical bus stop on Westchester Avenue. There's a concrete bus pad, usually. Um, there is a bus stop. There may or may not be a shelter, may or may not be, um, a bench. Usually there's like a, uh, sidewalk that goes into the site that, um, is, is next to the stop, but not always. Another example, the worst is if you're on Red Oak Lane. This is down here. Um, because there is a bus stop for westbound buses on Westchester Avenue, but to get, to go eastbound, you really gotta walk. You gotta walk, um, up here, over this bridge and then, actually, this one, I guess, isn't that far, but it's still kinda far. Um, and these roads have, like, Westchester Avenue has no sidewalks. So in a lot of ways, like, if you're, if you're trying to get to this bus stop, in, um, you have to walk with traffic, which is not good. Um, the cars are coming behind you and so you cross over the bridge. So usually any folks who are taking these buses have to, at some point in the day, walk the wrong way along a road with no sidewalk. Oh, right. And then finally, we've pointed out in previous letters that this, um, blockage here, um, could really, if you, if we could run buses through here, this could really help. Because as you can see, there's bus routes on both sides of 684, but everything has to run in and back. And if you could let a bus go through here, you might be able to create some efficiencies where you could run buses through the area, which would really save a lot of, um, you could probably run more buses. It would sit, cut down on the runtime of the buses. It, it would be something we could at least look at, um, but we can't look at it if it's closed. So, moving on to the easternmost part,
We've made several referrals, responses. What has Harrison's response been to our letters?
We don't, we don't know. I mean, they don't, they don't write us back.
It's a one-way street.
I mean, I will say, I will say, I will say that when, when something comes in,
This is a large planning issue. This isn't just a school.
Right. I, I will say, when, when things require scoping documents, like when a draft scope comes in, and we make these comments on the draft scope, the final scope includes a lot of times the comments that we make. So the EIS will have to discuss it. So the, but the thing is, the EIS is for some of these products haven't come in yet. So we'll wait and see. I'm hopeful that, since the town village is requiring them to discuss in the EIS, I'm hopeful that, you know, um, maybe something can come of it.
They don't have a full-time planner, do they, Harrison?
Uh, yeah, he's part-time.
They have a consultant.
Right.
Is there any way to schedule a joint planning board meeting with the Harrison Planning Board and the County Planning Board? We could make this presentation and, uh, maybe we could have some interaction.
I will say they had near-perfect attendance at our referrals roadshow earlier in the, when we, when we went out to the municipalities. They had almost perfect attendance. So, yeah, maybe.
Are they expecting any CEDP G1?
No, they did not join the consultation. No.
Yeah, but I think it's a really important to get feedback because, you know, the recommendations are being made, but then if we don't know what's happening.
Right.
Yeah, one by one is something, but this is a whole bunch.
Right.
And do any of the proposed residential projects have affordable housing?
Um, the, yeah, yeah, yeah. The Toll Brothers does, yes.
Forty-two units, yeah.
Yeah.
I testified at the, uh, planning board hearing at the Toll Brothers regarding affordable housing, but the others?
Um, well, the other housing one, they didn't say one where the other yet, but it's just in scoping. So, so we made a comment and I, I believe it went into the, I, I'm not a hundred percent. In the final scoping document, it said, oh, you have to discuss, there must be discussion of affordable housing.
Harrison has not adopted the model ordinance, so they're not required to have affordable housing.
Yeah, isn't this also an environmental issue? I mean, this is an awful lot of excess driving around in circles at low speeds.
Right.
And it seems to me that possibly the state has some interest in terms of environmental quality.
Well, I mean, we've tried to make the case,
We certainly do.
Yeah. Well, we've tried to make the case, um, because Westchester Avenue is a county road. You're certainly burdening the county road by having more cars come out and back and, you know, if, if you could go through from one side to another without going into Westchester Avenue, you save a car from going through sometimes up to four stoplights, four county signals.
And I'm sure we have some issues with workforce requirements in that area. Is there any pressure that could be brought to the Toll Brothers?
Oh, you mean,
Communicating with the, the need for transportation of workers in this area.
Yes, we've brought that up in every single referral letter. Um, I, we, I was disappointed with Wegmans because we, they noted that it was a 24-hour, it would be a 24-hour facility with up to 500 employees. And so we responded by saying, you know, we know from looking at other supermarkets in southern Westchester that you will have a substantial number of employees taking the bus. And they put the buses, the bus stop as far away from the building as they possibly could with minimal sidewalk, I mean, it was really, it was upset, it was upsetting, you know, to me because we made these comments and they didn't really do anything. They did meet with, uh, the be, our beeline folks, but my understanding from that meeting was that they just said, you know, we're not concerned with it. Now, it could be the fact that Wegmans is new to the region and maybe they don't understand that their workforce will seek to ride transit to their jobs, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'd like, I mean, that's kind of my, my thought is, okay, maybe you're just new here and you just don't realize it. But, um, you know, we know that people are gonna ride the bus to those jobs.
Hey, uh, Harrison would benefit from this proposal and what you just presented to us, I think. I don't know if we could offer, uh, for Lucas to sit down with the planning board and go over this directly with them and say, here's what we're seeing and, uh, and I think the beeline issue is bigger than usual here somehow. When you put it down and just looking at it saying, people deserve to be safe.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so you add all that up together and maybe there's, they can at least look at internal sidewalks and stuff like that. It's usually not a big, it's hard to get the private property owners to coordinate, but sidewalks are different, I think, in terms of coordination. In terms of, they don't want the traffic from one business going into the other, but blocking, I think, is less controversial. So they actually give them a full, the presentation they're giving us, might induce them, and then opening the road, just the buses that you described, that had the, I mean, that seemed like, uh, very little harm coming from that, so like, you know, the neighbors can't be that upset about something like that, so.
And the one-way truck traffic idea.
Yeah, and there also is then a question of attracting the labor force. I mean, I, they can't be just getting people to work there from that teardrop. I mean, they're gonna have to get people who wanna work as cashiers.
Right, right.
Or stockmen or whatever.
Right.
Or stocker, yeah.
I mean, you know, I, I sometimes go to ShopRide in White Plains, you know, on my lunch break to go grocery shopping. And then I'll occasionally chat with people who work there and I'll ask them how they get to work. And it's always some tortured bus commute or something, you know, it's,
They only stay until they can find something else, right.
Okay, 1133. That's across the,
David, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. What about with like, uh, like sidewalk improvements or roadway, I mean, you said it's campus road. Is this on our, you know, uh, you know, radar at all or?
I, I, you know,
Maybe make the same, same presentation to BW, you know, and say, maybe we gotta start thinking about incorporating some of these into some of our capital plan.
I mean, the whole corridor, I mean, from a safety standpoint, I mean, I will tell you that pedestrian activity is routine. I mean, it might be low, but it's routine. You have people getting off on buses all day long at these stops. And, you know, in a lot of cases, they're walking on road, on what, they have to use a portion of Westchester Avenue at some point throughout their day and that road has no sidewalks anywhere.
Yeah, and I think that this is the area, I saw somebody actually walking across the highway.
Oh, like walking across the lanes of the highway and jumping over the median? Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
It was a shorter walk. Oh, okay, so, so this is just real quick. Um, the, uh, the eastern portion of the corridor, there's really not a lot of referrals that have happened. Like I said, the, the Purchase, um, WestMed here, that was, you know, ten, over 10 years ago. But 1133 Westchester Avenue is the current one. Now, this is in White Plains. And this is a 74, it's a large, 74.2 acre campus office park. And the proposal is for 303 new apartments within that office park. Um, so if you don't have any questions, we can just move straight into that if you like.
And who's building this? The apartments?
Oh, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna go, I wanna, you're gonna get all the details. So, okay, so this is called The Flats at Westchester, um, and it's at the 1133 Westchester Avenue site. The development overview is basically, um, the, the, the existing office park site contains one large, um, four-story, uh, multi-tenant office building. So it's a very large building. It's, uh, 529,000 square feet. It's on a very large 74.2 acre site. And so the idea is they wanna construct three apartment buildings totaling 303 units within the site. So, to, the approvals that they need is, well, the site is zoned campus office district. And that is eligible for a planned campus development district overlay. The zoning code basically allows this overlay almost as of right. So they need to have a, they need to apply for the zoning map amendment to apply the overlay. And then the idea is to subdivide 20 acres of the site into a new tax lot so that the residential buildings are so that the residential buildings are on their own lot. And then they need site plan approval from the White Plains Common Council after that. So here again is the site. Let's see, I forgot how I wanted to talk about this here. Here's the site, and. Ah, I did? Oh, here we, okay. So the attributes of the site are, it's one of the most isolated sites along the Platinum Mile. It actually doesn't have any road frontage on Westchester Avenue. Instead, it has road frontage on a residential street called Dryer Lane back here. This is North Street over here. So it has no frontage, and the driveway that gets, that takes you from Westchester Avenue into the, to the front door, which is right here, is a third of a mile. So it's a long drive or a long walk to get from the street into the site. The site is very.
Do you know where the hospital was?
The hospital? Oh, St. Agnes?
Yeah.
No, no, that, no, that's further back. That's on North Street.
And it's an uphill third of a mile.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On a sidewalk that may not be ADA compliant. Here's a, an aerial of it. Basically, another thing about this is that it's, it's surrounded by a lot of woods. This is Maplemore Golf Course over here. There's a large grade change. This is kind of like up on a plateau overlooking the golf course. But you can't really see the golf course and vice versa because there's a lot of woods. And the woods are all covered with invasive vines. So between the woods and the vines, like you really can't see too.
I can confirm that, you can't see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Even in the wintertime, I was just over there, and the vines, you can't see through the vines. So, so that's good. But it's very, it's really high up compared to the, to the golf course. And then it has a wooded buffer around it, you know, in between these neighborhoods, and there's lots of rock outcroppings and, and grade changes, separating it from, from these sites. So it's, it's a very, very isolated site. The idea is to build the apartment buildings in this area, the shaded area. So the buildings, this is, this is basically the site disturbance, this is over here. Nothing else would really change. And to give you an idea, this is what they want to do. So you can see here, it's three buildings, one, two, three. And there's parking here in between the existing office building and the new buildings. So this green line here represents the current edge of the parking lot. So this is the edge of the current site disturbance. So the idea is that they want to kind of do a big cut. They want to dig out this area here and push the fill out this way, out this way, and create a level area. And then it would create like a ledge for them to build these three buildings. So if you can imagine, this is going to be up to 16 feet in height, this retaining wall. And so they're going to dig in 16 feet and push all the, you know, the fill out here and create 35 feet of elevation change with these two retaining, well, it's actually more than two retaining walls, and to construct the buildings. And here is like a close-up of, you know, the grading plan here. So this is the edge of the existing parking lot. This is the first retaining wall. This is 10 feet over here, 16 feet over here. This is two of the buildings. The third building is over here. And as you can see, there's a very steep grade that they're going to create with these retaining walls. This is a 35-foot difference between here and here. Now, the other thing is, is that there's this water course that kind of runs from the site. It might be spring-fed, or it might be fed from the runoff of the site. This water course is a wetland slash water course. It goes into Maplemore Golf Course. Looking at aerials of the golf course, it looks like it's probably just goes into a pipe or, you know, something like that, eventually into the Mariner, Marinerneck River. So that's what it is. This is a drawing of what the building would look like. This is the center building. So it's pretty much just like a urban apartment building. It had, this is a leasing and amenity space here. They don't say what the amenities would be, or if it would all be leasing or all be amenities. But pretty much after that, it's just a couple of doors, a hallway, and then a line of apartments on each side of the building. These are bigger apartments, like two and three-unit apartments at the ends, but these are all one-bedroom apartments. They also have a couple of one-bedroom apartments with a den, so essentially a second bedroom, but no windows, so you can't call it that. This is one of the other buildings. As you can see, there's no amenity space. It's just a building, you come in the door, hallway with apartments. So that's basically it. So going on to the draft comments that we wrote in the letter. Patterns in Westchester 2025 state pretty clearly that already developed sections of existing corridors should be transformed into efficient and attractive multi-use places. And part of the effort the county has undertaken to do this is with the office park housing study, is study or report, we call it. Either one, tomato to tomato. Which, you know, advocates for this type of development, where you can create a mixed-use environment with, you know, housing and office space. But at the same time, this site is very isolated. There's no street frontage, there's a very long driveway. It places a higher density of housing pretty far from most services, where you require a lot of driving. And we've seen this before, you know, recently with other projects like the MBIA redevelopment. There's a, in North Castle, The View, which was another one, apartment buildings out in the woods overlooking the reservoir. That was also in North Castle. Ridg Hill Village is kind of like this. They have an apartment building that's next to the mall, but not really near anything else. So we haven't had a lot of historical experience with these types of developments, except for Ridg Hill Village, which has opened, but the apartments have not been completed. The other ones have just been proposed, but they haven't been built yet. The other issue is, is there appears to be very, very little integration of the uses. If you look at the code for White Plains, states what they want in the code for these types of developments. They want a master planned, it seems to say they want a master planned integrated community. And this site plan segregates the residential and office uses a lot. There's a 10-foot, up to a 6-foot, 16-foot retaining wall separating the two uses. You have to go up a bunch of stairs to get from the, to get over the wall. It's on separate tax lots. The, the parking is supposed to be shared, but really, the parking is kind of sort of shared, like the existing parking is slightly more than the proposed parking. But the, where it's shared is, is that not all the parking space is designated for the residential use or actually near the residential buildings. Some of that residential parking will have to occur in the office area above the wall. So those folks will have to park above the wall and walk down the stairs to their apartments. Right, right, right. Yeah, this is the wall here. So, so see how it says, if you can read it, it says proposed residential parking? This isn't enough parking according to the ordinance for these buildings. So some folks will have to park in what it says proposed office parking. But this is a huge retaining wall that goes all the way around, so that they could level this area out. So this is a 16-foot wall here. Down here, it's only 10 feet. This is where the stairs are. There's no other stairs anywhere else.
The parking is above.
Yeah, this is, this is a lot higher than this. Yeah, so if you're here and you're on like the second floor, you're looking out even with the office parking. And if you're on the first floor, you're looking at a 16-foot tall wall when you walk out the door.
Excuse me, what about accessibility? You're saying it's only stairs?
Okay, I'm glad you asked. Okay, so, 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 so they figured that out. So if you live in this building here and you need to, you know, you can't go upstairs, you can go down this sidewalk all the way to here, then you can cross at this roundabout, and then you can go into the office building here.
Only more than one.
You can do anything you want.
And do we know why they only want one-bedroom apartments?
No, no, it's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. I mean, most of them are one-bedroom apartments, but they do offer, they will be offering two and three-bedroom apartments.
Now, if the office building was just an office building, and residents, unless you lived in it and worked in the office building, you have no reason to go to the office building. This office building has a daycare center, has, has a gym, has.
Hair salon.
Hair salon, I think it has a.
Yeah, cafeteria.
So there are justifications for, you know, having a connection other than having to go over a 16-foot retaining wall to get to that connection. So again, if they weren't there, then you say, well, there's no reason to connect them, although, other than a planning concept. But here, there is a justification, and they're not doing that.
It would be, I would be curious to see if they had any other ideas, like, how did they arrive at this? Like, for example, you could even, even if you wanted to keep this arrangement, you could just move these buildings this way and just build it over parking. And then you wouldn't have to add all this extra retaining walls and impervious surface. I mean, that's at the minimum you could do that. Or maybe you could cluster the buildings over here, or maybe you can move them closer to the building and create like a little main street in between. I mean, it would just be interesting to see what else you could do, instead of, I don't know why they chose this.
Yeah, and I think this looks like a major flood hazard, unless they're going to use permeable paving.
We're going to get to that.
This looks like a rapid disaster.
Right, right. We're going to get to Maplemore in a minute. Okay, so, all right. So I'll just go quickly, I'll just go quickly through this stuff. The other interesting thing was, is that the, the development that's proposed by the applicant is only limited to this area here, where the new buildings are. It's a huge site, but they don't talk about anything else. When you think about it, they're going to be adding 303 new households to this site. And so there's an expectation that the residential tenants will utilize other parts of the site. And, you know, it's interesting that nothing else is shown on the plans for what they want to do with it. And, you know, when I, so this is basically what you'll be looking at if you, if you're in one of those buildings. This is the view from where, well, of course, you got to keep in mind, there's going to be like a 16-foot wall here. You're going to be below it. But if you're on like the second or third floor, this is what you'll see. And this is like the access with the, you know, the view to the front door, the, the front door is up here, so there's right there. So this is like kind of the main way in. The site's got a lot of green space around the edges. It would be interesting to see what they thought the green space might be used for. Like, maybe some of the residents might use this for recreational purposes, you know, I mean, it's just sitting there. There's a, there's a problem with the sidewalks interior to the site. They just stop and start randomly. You know, you can even see there's, there's a desire line where people have, yeah, where people keep walking. Don't they know? They should turn around. Here's, here's something funny I saw. This is an abandoned stairway. There's stairs here, and it's concrete, and there's stairs here, but then the stairs just end. The stairs have all these loose parts that, you know, are tripping hazards and, you know. If kids live here, they'll probably hang out here. Here, here's a neat rock outcropping that someone might like to try to climb, you know, and they can. And these are houses that are right behind, screened by invasive vines. Okay, so we, it would just be nice to see if they could think more holistically about the site. Okay, moving on to transit access, this site is served by shuttle loop D. And again, as I mentioned before, it's peak times only, in the peak direction only. So AM service from the train station to the office building, PM service from the office building to the train station. But we were hoping that there might be a potential to allow reverse service. So when the bus comes in and drops people off from the train station in the morning, maybe they could pick up the residents and take them to the train as well. And that's something that they could work out with our Beeline folks. They did note that they're also going to be adding more service to the site in April. Loop C will also serve the site. So there is potential for that. That's one good thing. But as I told you before, you know, if you aren't using those loops, or you're traveling at a time that's outside of the peak, these are the bus stops that you will have to use. So this is going eastbound towards Portchester. It's right in front of the site. This unfortunately is going into White Plains. You have to go out. There's no sidewalk, bridge, no sidewalk again to that bus stop. It's a pretty, it's like a three-quarters of a mile walk from the building to get to that. This is the bus stop. I showed it to you before, but this is 1133. This is what it is. So this is going on, the bus going towards Portchester, eastbound on Westchester Avenue. This is the sidewalk going up into the site. This is where the sidewalk gets steep, and I don't believe it's compliant with the ADA. Okay, now this is if you're coming from the other side of Westchester Avenue. And when I was out there, I saw two women walking from, you know, from over there. And as you can see, they're, they have to walk on this road with no shoulder with the flow of traffic to get from that bus stop into the site. I stopped and chatted with them, and one of the women said that she does this every single day. And please, 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 can you help us? This is what she said. Pedestrian and bicycle access. Okay, pedestrian volumes are low, but they are routine. There's walking to and from transit. There's walking, I saw walking in between the office park sites. There's also recreational walking, those who go out on their lunch breaks to walk. It happens. Okay, so bicycle usage is envisioned for the site because the rendering actually shows a person on a bicycle. So, you know, they're expecting them to come. So how is the site connected to the city's bicycle route system? And what's the role of the city's bike share program with the site? That should be addressed.
And how do school buses get from that?
I guess they drive up the, yeah, I mean, yeah, they, they may not have the, they may not have the right turning, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That's a good question.
They can do that.
Okay, so moving on to stormwater. This is, this has the most direct impact to county facilities. There is going to be certainly an expansion of impervious surfaces. There's changes in site elevation through these retaining walls. There's going to be, because of this, there's going to be an impact to the volume, the quality, and the direction of the stormwater flow. And this could all have negative consequences for Maplemore. And as you can see, it all goes down to this stream here that goes into the golf course. And when they construct these retaining walls, it's going to change the, the flow of the water. You'll note here that there is this detention basin. It's piped directly, the overflow of this basin is piped directly into this water, water course, which goes directly into the golf course. So that's an issue for concern.
And Maplemore is being redone as we speak.
Right.
And I would dare say, the drainage is a big issue. I don't think they're taking into account this possible change.
Right.
I don't think they would even know that.
Right, that's what.
Well, I don't know about the change, but I've spoken to the people in Maplemore, they go there, and they say that a major part of their water problem comes from, comes from this site. Now, it's true, the Hutchinson River will overflow sometime. That's eight and nine, holes eight and nine. But the rest of the, it's getting water from this particular site currently.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm much more concerned about the housing there on the first floor. Because, you know, before it gets to the golf course, it's going to go through the apartment building.
Right, but they're going to pipe it to that basin, or going to try.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be catch basins going, going into the hole.
I mean, what, what I was told when I talked to our landscape architecture staff was that because the, the golf course has been receiving higher volumes of water over time, that this project is necessary. This drainage improvement project is necessary. But the project is based on an analysis that doesn't include these changes. And I was told that the water kind of coming from the site right now is very clean. And this could potentially change not only the quantity and the direction, but it could also change the, the quality of the water, and that could impact this project that's already underway. And just to point out, like, this stormwater basin is probably going to be a major issue. If it's not properly maintained, this could be a big problem. Also, they've decided to put like a seating area right next to this, which if you live in apartment buildings, that basically means this is where you walk your dog, and this is where you smoke your cigarettes, if you can't smoke them inside your apartment. And they have to have, they would have to have a very aggressive program to make sure that that kind of waste doesn't end up in here. If, and then if this isn't maintained, it all just gets flushed out here, and then it goes here, which is, which is an issue.
Yeah, and parking lot doesn't look very drainage-friendly.
I, I mean, they do the calculations, how they have to do the calculations, but it, it's definitely going to change the discharge points. Like, one discharge point might be higher than before, one might be lower.
Do they need county permit for the drainage plant?
Not like a steam, a stream control permit, no. David, do they need one? Okay. They did have a draft stormwater control facility maintenance agreement, which we have like suggested, we have some specific comments suggested for it, that it should be based on specific operation maintenance. There should be specific operation maintenance plans for each aspect of the stormwater. There should be specific operation maintenance plans for each aspect of the stormwater system. Um, they should follow, you know, the appropriate guidance, the state guidance. There should be requirements for inspection and reporting. There should be an escrow account to ensure that the inspections happen and that the maintenance happens. So, these are, should be added to the draft that they put in the appendix of their application. And then finally, just last comments that we, uh, these are just more just standard comments, that we, it's a county road, there should be sufficient space for recycling. We want, we would hope that it would be green building. And finally, snow piling. This is just something I noticed when I went to the site. The area where they wanna construct the buildings is currently used for snow piling. So, they need to show on the plans where they're gonna do the snow piling now. Um, and, and this is the view, this is the view of the golf course. As you can see, you can't really see the golf course, but you can see, you know, there's a lot of vines blocking your view, but, um, that's basically it. And so, that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Louis.
Sorry we're so long.
You have in your package a draft letter. Um, it's unfortunate that this is the first proposal that responds to the study that we did, the office park housing. And yet, it, it, it responds to it, but it doesn't, the details just aren't very successful in terms of integrating the residential and the office. Um, and there will be more impermeable surface put in. That study hoped that a lot of the development would be on excess parking, or as Lucas said, parking over existing parking lot, but still using the parking lot, and they're not doing that. So, we have a letter which incorporates all these comments, uh, to send to the City of White Plains. Um, if anyone has any other comments regarding--
I had a couple of thoughts. The extremely aggressive plan, uh, dealing with the slopes and stuff. I wondered, does this zoning change restrict the height of the proposed building? I mean, if you, if the apartment buildings went up more and there were less of them, less, less footprint, uh, that might, and then maybe looking out over some of this stuff instead of looking at it. Is the zoning restrict the height of the proposed? And if it doesn't, then they could consider going up and eliminate the building or two, and get better views out of it. And then, the, just really a comment back to the two eighty-seven corridor study we did. Where, um, where's the BRT? Where are we in terms of when the Tappan Zee Bridge opened, we were putting in the bus lanes? And those bus lanes were then gonna get over the Tappan Zee and get into areas where we sort of identified, um, this gets too broad a comment, and I do wanna get on other stuff. But I just wondered, when we had the nice study that Lucas was doing, the BRT solution that we had looked at, didn't seem to implement that at all.
Well, yeah, the Hudson Link has been implemented, but it's not really all, not a lot of components of it are, are, yeah, are in place yet. So, maybe we can plan an update on that as well.
The, um, Louis, Lucas, the retaining wall world that is being created here is, um, I think, a big issue. I'm not sure how you flag it out. I mean, if you're building into slopes like this, the visual impact, the aggressive use of land like that, um, I don't, I didn't actually see a comment on that, and maybe I can't even express one properly, but is there, if there is a piece about the, these, the number and size of the retaining walls that are made necessary to do this, it adds into the stormwater issue that you brought up, but it also just has a visual impact. And, uh, you know, it's, and so that, in a way, that the way it's constructed, we don't have sort of recreational space that's split out for the tenants to get into, but instead we got a parking lot with a bunch of retaining walls and the difficult, uh, to go anywhere other than to get in your car and go somewhere, I guess. And then, Richard was bringing up the fact that the office park has some amenities, but can they be made available to the tenants in here? They, they wanna subdivide it, creating a separate parcel, so there is, other than the parking lot overlapping, there is, it doesn't appear to be any connection between the two.
There is in terms of the ownership, so they, they will be willing to have the tenants go use the facility--
Oh, they will.
Except getting there is not, not easy.
Also, also, the, the stuff that's at that office park is not necessarily everyday stuff, like, like the hair salon, or, I mean, the cafeteria, you might need a, I don't know, but like, I've noticed that the applicant sent us a brochure about their other developments, and they were all, like, near stores.
Yeah.
Like, and this is the first one that they are doing that's not near, like, a store. Even in places like in Texas, where they were building on, like, like virgin land, like, the land next to it was being built as a store, like, so the, the community was master planning. So, this is the, every single one of them is near, in fact, they were advertising, like, walking distance to shopping, walking distance to transit. And this is, this one won't have those in their advertisements.
The, uh, it doesn't, I don't know if it'd work on this site, but actually, where the retaining walls are, to have the buildings located and connected right into the retaining walls, you could then put elevators and stuff in to get you from one level to the other. You'd have to move the buildings against, in the retaining wall to become a part of the buildings. I don't know if that's a good idea or not for this, but if you could go up and move them in toward where the retaining walls are and go up, you could probably create access that's better than what they're showing.
Instead of having retaining walls where they're proposing it, splitting the two parking lots, raise the, the parking lot and the residential area up to the parking lot level, and have the large retaining wall on the other side of the building, which wouldn't be a visual issue for any of the residents and the--
Yeah, and since there's a lot of green around it, they could have staggered retaining walls--
Anyway, we can't redo their plan for them, so--
But I'm very concerned about that parking lot. I think it's an eyesore. It does not seem to have any kind of visual, and I think it has to be, if they're gonna do it like that, it has to be permeable paving, because that is nothing but a big tarmac, and that's absurd. And, and there's a problem with the flooding of the first floor apartments there.
The visual impact could be, definitely, I had a dear thought coming from what Renee's saying and what I'm saying. Retaining walls by their nature are no beauties anyway, no matter what you do.
Yeah, and staggering them might provide some--
Give some landscaping opportunities, yeah.
Yeah, and then you could, you could lay areas on them and stuff like that, but they have to be more permeability there. There has to be.
And the access is really awful.
The access is ridiculous.
Well, White Plains does have a planning department, so, uh, hopefully, they will read our letter and, and maybe, uh, make some suggestions as this goes before the Planning Board and the Common Council in White Plains.
So, was Lincoln adding, just to take a little crack at adding the, what you just said, and then--
And then recirculate the letter.
Yeah, we have, one good time, so.
Actually, they had a public hearing last night, but it was apparently going to be continued--
Yeah, we, we asked for more time.
To next month.
Yeah, and it was also the one of issues.
Yeah, I don't know.
The school buses.
Oh, yes, school buses.
Okay.
They should have to be--
Yeah, we have to do one thing for action.
Matter for Planning Board to actually conveyance of easement to New York City Department of Environmental Protection in Pleasantville.
Good morning. New York City has requested access over a county parcel in Pleasantville. Just to give you an idea about the location, for everyone to see here, just north of downtown Pleasantville, on your way up to Chappaqua, you've got the Sawmill River Parkway and the Metro North Railroad, and this is a local, mostly residential street, Washington Avenue. At some, at one point, the New York City Catskill Aqueduct runs across all that, all those properties and facilities, um, and there's a parcel of New York City property in the vicinity of the Catskill Aqueduct there. New York City, there is requesting access across a county parcel right next door to get to a manhole. They need to rehabilitate a facility on, at the Catskill Aqueduct. There's an existing, um, easement across a piece of the county parcel. The city wishes to build a new access road down a steep slope and cutting across the county parcel over here, we have another drawing that shows it in more detail. There's an existing access to this manhole and to the city property across the Sawmill River that goes here, but then continues through some residential properties that have been built since this was all done a hundred, ninety, a hundred years ago, when they built all these facilities. So, the city sees it as more feasible, better for, than cutting across and having to deal with residential properties, sees it as more feasible coming down its own property and cutting across this corner of the county parcel. You see here in red that the county also has its county trunk sewer that comes down the Sawmill River Valley that goes through the county parcel and through the New York City parcel. Uh, our Department of Environmental Facilities is actually supportive of this proposal to build this new access road, in that it'll give the county better access to its county trunk sewer line, where right now, they kinda have to bushwhack down through the property, their own property, down through the south here. So, the city will get its own access to its manhole, so they can repair the valve here, and the county will then get better access to its county trunk sewer. So, the parcels, the easements, and the temporary access licenses are all very small parcels. I'll kinda run through it, but very quickly. Uh, here is the, a proposed access road going down the hill, cutting across this little piece of the county parcel here is in blue. Permanent access is along where the road would be. Temporary access are on these two small parcels, um, and they're all, this is point oh-two-two acres, and these are similar sized, um, and we have a resolution, oh, and in terms of, this, this property was purchased as part of the Sawmill River Parkway, so it was purchased for parkland, but it hasn't been used as parkland. It's inaccessible. It's separated from the, from the Parkway, um, so that's also reflected in your, in your resolution here. Um, so, the resolution basically supports that--
Does the county have to replace this?
No, we're still gonna own it, we're just granting an easement to New York City.
Granting an easement, um, oh--
But it's a permanent easement, so that's why--
It's a permanent easement across here, then, once this road is completed, the county then will get an easement off, across the city property. So, so kind of a win-win for the city and the county. It's a difficult site, but again, this is their kind of, uh, this is really their sole access to this valve, and it, the county gains access to its trunk sewer line, kind of a win-win here.
Is that a bridge over the--
There, there's an existing bridge that was built all those years ago, over the Sawmill, and it's, they may have to repair it, but it exists, and that's where they're winding their way down, curl around here, cross, and they get to this area on the other side of the Sawmill, so it's on the other side of the river, so. So, again, the resolution is that the, um, Planning Board supports granting a temporary license, uh, over all three of the small parcels, and then also supporting the non-exclusive permanent easement over the point oh-two-two acres, uh, over here, which is the one parcel that would be the permanent access for the, for the road.
Will this in any way affect the ownership of the residence that--
They're gonna need, my understanding is that they're gonna also need easements just in the rear, rear portion, down the big hill, similar to our construction temporary easements. They're gonna need easements to, also from the residential parcels to the rear there. Uh, but this old, this existing easement, they're not pursuing this easement, because, again, that stretches across existing residential properties. So, uh, this was also presented to the Parks Board, and my understanding that the County Parks Board also had some current concerns about impacts of construction upon the residential properties, and, uh, they requested that there be some kind of language that, um, to minimize construction dust, construction noise during--
Construction time?
And construction time. We could, right, we can make a comment on that, but, uh, that's up to you.
Can I look at the big one again?
Sure. So, here we are. This is, uh, kind of, from, from up above.
A lot of stuff, well.
Yeah, it's a lot of convergence of a lot of things. Again, Catskill Aqueduct there, yes.
So, this might actually give better access to the county parcel.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. So, we're getting access right now--
That might be able to develop something there.
I mean, it's--
It's landlocked, aside from that, that little road.
Like, the magnetic area.
It's, it's, it's very landlocked. The river runs right through the middle of it. So, this parcel doesn't continue way, way up. It's just, it's like a twenty-acre parcel that's landlocked between the railroad, the back of the residences, and this is, and this is not like a true, true road. It's really just, it's a very steep, you know, for, for--
Yeah, it's a dirt road path, or, you know, yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to authorize--
One quick question.
Yeah.
Usually parkland, as far as active state legislature, do any--
We're not alienating it. Again, we're not selling the property, we're just granting an easement.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
And that doesn't alienate?
No. Why do you have that?
Because we have a truck line running underneath it?
It's, it's, it's a residual parcel from parkland that was purchased, you know, eighty or ninety, a hundred years ago.
Yeah, we need access to our parkland.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
Yeah.
Second. Can I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Next. Here for board information, ConEd moratorium.
Good morning, everyone. So, I wanted to provide you with a timeline as to the actions that the county executive and his administration have taken with respect to the ConEd moratorium. As you all know, on January seventeenth, ConEd announced that they would be implementing a temporary moratorium and no longer accept applications for natural gas connections from new customers, starting March fifteenth, which is ten days from now. And according to ConEd, this is a result of high gas demand on cold, on the coldest winter days and the limited pipeline capacity in the area. On February seventh, the Public Service Commission approved ConEd's Smart Solutions Program, or Proposal, which is a two-hundred-and-twenty-three-million-dollar initiative aimed at pursuing non-pipeline solutions and boosting the use of heat pumps and gas efficiency measures in the region. While the county's in support of this proposal, we do think it's a little, it's too little, too late with respect to everything that's happening with ConEd and their capacity for energy. On February thirteenth, the PSC also held a, um, public hearing in White Plains, which the county executive attended, and there were three main items that I want to highlight with respect to his testimony. First, he asked ConEd and the PSC verbally and in writing to delay the moratorium until thirty days after the PSC report is due, in order to allow everyone a thirty-day period to review the PSC's findings. So, the commission has instituted a staff investigation and report on changing market conditions, which is due to them by July first. The county executive would like an additional thirty days in order to assess important safety considerations and allow the county to survey its own natural gas use and evaluate possible clean energy and efficiency alternatives. Second, the county executive announced a multi-step approach to deal with this moratorium county-wide. The county is keeping a full list of projects and their timetables for construction to get a big picture of where the county stands with respect to demand. The county is also working with the IDA to provide economic incentives to encourage businesses transitioning to greener alternatives. The county will also enlist the help of the, of energy consultants, who can guide the county through the regulatory process, and work with the business community and other entities to help navigate this moratorium and how it relates to development. Third, and most important of all, the county executive provided an estimate of the economic harm that would be caused by this moratorium. So, without natural gas, sixteen thousand new residential units are at risk, two million square feet of new commercial space are at risk, lost construction jobs are about twenty-five thousand, lost permanent retail jobs would be between five to seven thousand, the lost number of residents in the county would be forty-eight thousand, and lost rental income would be about sixty million every year. Other negative impacts would include the lost economic stimulus and the impact on the county's effort to sustain and support affordable housing. On February twenty-fifth, County Attorney John Nona submitted comments of the county of Westchester and a request for the PSC to issue an order before March fifteenth, holding the moratorium in abeyance, until the commission takes action on the results of this investigation. And on February twenty-eighth, Planning Board Chair Richard Heidman sent a letter to-- And on February 28th, Planning Board Chair Richard Heidman sent a letter to Secretary Katherine Burgess at the New York State Public Service Commission, supporting the county executive's plans and his testimony, but also urging for a formal dialogue between land use, the land use planning community and the PSC to ensure that local municipalities adequately and accurately account for available utility capacitive, capacity in their comprehensive planning process. Right now, the county is working to identify new prospective customers, actually, who would be interested in becoming interruptible customers, and make sure that their application and approval process with Con Ed is non-problematic. Con Ed has assured us that any customer who would want to become an interruptible customer would, would not have any problems in being able to do that. The county is also working with NYSERDA and the power authority to see what additional incentives can be created to provide to these potential new customers. And that's it. Any questions?
The letter we did send out to all of the members-
I feel like I need to speak.
Have we heard about possible extension of the devil?
Not yet, as of yesterday. But we keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Do we know from the developers what plans they're making to address this?
Well, there have been a lot of applications submitted before March 15th.
They've gotten their applications in.
So that has been the main.
The issue is not getting the applications in. Almost everything we've reviewed, they've gotten their application in. However, there's a two-year deadline to hook up, and a lot of these projects are still in the approval stages, which could take two years, construction stages could take over two years, so a lot of the projects that have gotten in by the deadline may not finish by the deadline, and that deadline of two years seems to be impossible.
Yes, I hear a lot of electric heating.
Okay. Next, Meerestead County Park in Bedford.
Okay. So it was my understanding that when some capital projects were brought to your attention at the last meeting, that some of you didn't know what Meerestead was, so I'm here to give you a little background on Meerestead.
Want to introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Aviva Meyer, work with the county executive. I'm the liaison to the Parks Department, among other departments. So, Meerestead, which means farmland in Gaelic, is a Westchester County park in Bedford consisting of 130 acres. It is, most of those acreages are in Bedford, but it's right along the border with Newcastle, so there's a few acres that are actually in Newcastle. This property was purchased by William Sloan of the W&amp;J Sloan Furniture Company in the beginning of the 20th century as a country estate away from the city. It had the convenience of access to the Mount Kysco train station, so it was an idle place. When it was purchased, it was the merging of two adjacent farmsteads, neighboring farmsteads. A, the estate was deeded to Westchester County in 1982 by William Sloan's daughter, Margaret Sloan Patterson, and her husband, Dr. Robert Patterson, and it became county property in 2000. It is listed on the National Registry of Historic Places, and the deed restricts use of the property to cultural, educational, museum, and a farm. It excludes commercial use of the property. I'm going to get back to the issues with the deed at the very end of this. So just to orient you, so Meerestead's about, it's like halfway between downtown Mount Kysco and 684, but it's very much in rural Bedford, as you can see. This is Byram Lake Road, and I want to bring your attention to Byram Lake Reservoir, which is Mount Kysco's source of drinking water. And it is also next to this Butler Memorial Sanctuary. Actually, some of the property, the Sloans owned more, more of than what is now Meerestead. They owned some of this property as well at some point, which I'll get back to. This is just a little bit closer in, so, so this is Byram Lake Road, so some of the property goes on this side of the road, goes around here along this area and into here. So you can, you can already see that some of the property is more woodland, some are open meadows, and then there's many buildings, which I'll go over. So there are, the, the architecture and layout of the estate was designed by Delano and Aldrick. There are 16 structures, and I'll start with the main house. So there's a main house and the surrounding formal gardens. There is a reflecting pool, there is a, a pool for usage, a swimming pool. The entranceway to the park off of Byram Lake Road is up this driveway. There's a bridge right here. Across the street, there's a pump house that is part of the water infrastructure complex. There's a carriage house. There's additional parking over here. This, this building, which is not, which is not part of Meerestead, but is Mount Kysco owned, is, connects to the, the water, to Byram Lake down here. If you go down Byram Lake Road, there is this tenant farm complex, which includes a farmhouse that dates from, that predates the Sloans. It actually dates from about 1770. And then there are surrounding barns, including a rather large dairy barn. And then you can also see the different pathways, the, this is the meadow, the different meadow lands, and this right here is the high point of the property. So this, this is a county park, and when the county took it over, they, they perhaps reinforced some of the trails that existed there. So this is the, the trail map with some of the features. The original intention of the park was actually to connect it to the surrounding open spaces. And so as I said, the, the Sloans actually had more of the, more land around here, including portions of, around here, which they donated to the Nature Conservatory, which became part of this neighboring Butler Sanctuary. So it, it connects directly to, to that sanctuary. On this side, this is Marsh Sanctuary, which then connects to Leonard Park, which is Mount Kysco's town park. And on this side, there's the land that's around the Byram Lake Reservoir, and that goes all the way down to the Eugene and Agnes Meyer Nature Conservatories. And some very enterprising person overlaid the trail systems of all of these different preserves, so this is Meerestead, and how it connects to all these different ones, which I thought was really cool, so I thought I'd share it with you, since someone took the time. Okay. So, just to focus on where we're doing the capital projects, this is the main house, which was built in 1906. It's a Georgian Revival. It's a brick structure. There are 26 rooms. There are, there are kind of two main rooms on the first floor. There's a library upstairs, there are a lot of the bedrooms. This L shape is kind of more like the servant, service area of it. The family were prolific art collectors, and so the, the artwork from the family's collection is in the house. It is my understanding that as the family condensed their properties, all of their artwork ended up here, which means that the, the amount of artwork that is in the house now is probably denser than it was when they actually lived there. They also were collectors of presidential letters and autographs, and some of those have been removed from the house and are actually in our archives in order to protect them. There's also a Steinway that was given to Mr. Sloan by Mr. Steinway, in a library with antique book collections. So because, because of all of the precious items that are in the house now, it is very important that we protect the building, and so the capital project that is moving head is to envelope the house, do some preventative maintenance. These are actually the two downstairs rooms. You can actually see this room through there, just to give you a, a perspective on the size. At the moment, the Copeland House, which is a nonprofit that's based at Aaron Copeland's house in Cortland, uses this as a satellite venue for their organization for about six concerts a year. So, just to give you an overview of what the water infrastructure is, that's what this map is. At the moment, the water is pumped from a artisan well, am I saying that right? Artesian well? Which sounds very fancy, but not good. So it goes, it goes down to the pump house, it is pumped to a reservoir that's over here. It is also pumped to a hot, the high point over here, where it feeds the main house and the farm complex. The, this self-contained water system supplies all of the water, all the water for buildings and agriculture purposes. So, it is definitely something that's gonna need to be upgraded. That is why I pointed out the Mount Kysco source, because that's where it will probably have to connect to. So that's, that's what some of the RMSO2 site, site work development, some of that is to design what that new source of water will be. If there's, if there's any more public use, there's gonna have to be a new source. Similarly, there's a septic system, which the main house tank is estimated capacity of 2,000 gallons, and there's also septic systems connected to the carriage house and to the farm, the farmhouse, but those have not been used, and the water has been cut up, cut off for those for a number of years. With the same capital project, as I mentioned, the entrance to the main house goes up this driveway that goes over this bridge, which predates the, the house being there. It is an old stone bridge that goes across the stream, and because of, at some point it will need repair, and it probably is connected to the water infrastructure repairs too, because in order for where those, those connections will be made will be dependent on what is happening with that bridge as well. And then there's a farmhouse, which actually is divided into two different residences. Again, because this is a, a historical house, it has a lot of local interests, including from the Bedford Historical Society. There's also an opportunity for getting state funding for this property, and so the idea is to, is to rehabilitate this, and this, and these residents could potentially be used as residents for caretaker of the farm, for possible future farmer for the, for the farm area, or someone overseeing the redevelopment. And so, just to wrap up, so there's, there's a lot of potential with this property, but there are also limitations because of all the capital needs and the limited amount in the trust. Our county attorney is currently looking to petition the surrogate court in order to consider the possibility of selling portions of the artwork to help pay for some of the improvements, as well as loosening up some of the restrictions on, on the deed. And it is my understanding that the, that Margaret Sloan's daughter has, is aware of this, and, and again, it's not, it's to loosen it up, it's not to open it up to anything, and as you can see from where the property is, there's, there will always be limitations in terms of where, because it's right in the middle of rural Bedford. You'll never be able to make it super expansive. So, the idea is to address the immediate capital needs and to also work with multiple entities to try to see what more this property can become. That's it.
Are there any other activities taking place in the building other than the Copeland House?
At the moment, no.
And what is county projections as to the type of, loose it with the-
Well, that's-
After all this money is spent to fix it up.
Well, so, the, one of the questions is what the deed can be loosened, because at the moment, it's just cultural uses, so for instance, I think the best metaphor is PBS could come in and film a, about this building, but they couldn't come in and film another Down Abbey. That's like the difference, so. If this could be a little-
Commercial use.
Yeah, it can't be a commercial use.
They can't rent it out for weddings or-
They can't rent it out for weddings.
And farmland as well?
And, and I should point out the farmland, so it is a, it is a farm, and they're, and it was used as a farm.
But it becomes problematic to use the farmland as farmland because it's dedicated parkland, and that's something else you should consider petitioning state about as well, since so many, so many municipalities and counties have farms as farmland, it becomes, it's hard to keep them as active farmland without the ability to contract with the farm and lease the property out for the farm. Could still serve a public use with education opportunities, but it's very, it's very difficult to do that with existing county, you know, resources to run, to run a farm. Can this be used for educational purposes? Educational purposes?
Yeah, yes.
So, can you have some type of school take place mostly, not just for do that?
Um, yeah, and then there, there is a area that I suppose, I suppose in the service area could be made into some sort of commercial kitchen, but you'd have to figure out the infrastructure issues before that.
There are a lot of historic buildings throughout the county that are museums, open to the public museums. I don't know what, how extensive the art collection is, but given that history, would it be used as a museum?
Yeah, that's another possibility. Yeah, absolutely.
Is this open to the public?
Um, well, the, the-
The trails.
The trails are open to the public.
But not the, not the main building?
Again, the programming still really has to get worked out. It's, at this point, the important thing is to preserve the building itself, and make sure that we're preserving the assets that are inside of it until we can figure out the best use for it.
It's not that they need a new roof, and there's all this artwork and everything in there, it's a little bit uncomfortable.
Right. So that's why we wanted to give you an overview, because, you know, it was clear that many of you were not familiar with the property. So, all right.
Okay. Is there any other business?
The only thing, Jane has arrived, so I do want to take an opportunity to introduce me and Linda, our new housing director, so.
Apologize for having a-
That's all. We understand, as we see the road network behind us, you know.
Oh, something is-
Apologize.
Oh, there's a big traffic jam.
That's morning traffic on the Decanix State Parkway.
Wow, this is awfully late for that.
Yeah.
Wow.
Goldworking?
Norman, just one quick thing. Just FYI, everybody, Dave DeLucia has retired.
Wow.
Yes, and he is coming back at a limited basis. He will be given various specific projects, and he has obviously been instrumental in getting forward, getting completed, so, but he is retired. so, but he is retired, and not being sixty-five, he is limited to a X amount of money, so he is not gonna be working full-time. So that is, it's, it's tough, his institution and all, he is priceless, but we're all replacing him, and we have to keep moving. Nobody ever thought they could replace John Thaver, remember, Norman?
Yeah.
And they did, indeed it did. Um, that's number one. Number two, on a positive note, too, uh, the North County Trail has begun the rehabilitation, which I know is a huge plus. Um, I can tell you, we get complaints just about every single day on bikers and anybody that's on it, so, the ground was, uh, broken a couple of weeks ago, we had a nice press event last week with the county executive, and, um, they were actually, it was at Grand Hills, and they were actually working on the parking up there, so we're very excited about that, that will be done, and then the money has been, um, allocated for the design of the South County Trail. So eventually, there will be one beautiful fabulous chapter, so that was a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after this meeting, there's gonna be a tour of the, of the center, and you're all invited to-
There's actually a tour of the emergency operation center, which is downstairs, it's not gonna be very long, but we have staff from emergency operations to, to kind of show you, like, it was activated this weekend for the snowstorm, to show you where it happens and really what happens down there, and the equipment that's down there, so it's just, you know, to better give you information for when you see any capital improvements or capital projects for this facility.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you all.